Good evening and welcome to the committee, the whole meeting of Richmond Council, Common Council. I can hardly say it. This day of August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and we are here tonight and tomorrow night to hear presentations from the mayor and his staff regarding the two thousand and twenty-four budget. And I'd just make a couple comments about the process that we're in. It's a long one. It starts early in August and involves departmental meetings with the mayor primarily, and he is gracious enough to invite council members to attend those meetings so they get a very early sense of what the budget might be for the upcoming year. Several of us did that in the course of against this present year. Tonight, we're hearing not the final budget by any means, but a budget that's in process, I would say, where we will become aware of where we stand relative to our revenue stream versus our distribution of funds. And this process will go on for another month or so until we get to our final budget and have final public hearings in which the public may come in and comment in regard to this matter. So having said that, I would turn the floor over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of council, as after much scrutiny and diligent work that we present to you the two thousand and twenty-four budget, I want to thank our department heads, office managers, and our finance department for all the work that has gone into crafting this budget. Our citizens funded this budget, and in return, we work to provide service to keep our city clean, safe, and welcoming to all we call Richmond home. I also want to take this time to thank each of you. You have served as thoughtful partners in our efforts to responsibly serve our community. Throughout the year, as we've managed the two thousand and twenty-three budget, there were instances which arose that we knew would give us challenges in twenty-four. Not only have we prepared for these challenges, as always, we've spent under our allocated limits to save money for next year. These financial challenges have come from many directions, such as our city's increase in health insurance coverage. We're certainly not unique in facing such rising healthcare costs, as many organizations have dealt with the same challenge. We're a self-funded entity, as you know, and although that brings a certain level of security to our city team and their premiums and an ability for us to better budget year to year for healthcare, we are the payer of our own claim. Under current conditions, we could see a potential increase of nearly seven hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-four for healthcare. We're going to closely monitor and manage this projected increase and do everything we can to lessen this impact on our bottom line. There are a limited number of ways in which we can do this, and however small those efforts may be, each have merit. We've taken many steps to improve health outcomes for our team. We've implemented a robust wellness program and expanded our healthcare. We're also incentivizing healthcare visits to catch health issues earlier, thereby reducing emergency room visits and catastrophic outcomes. We'll continue these efforts with the understanding that as we progress through each year, things happen, procedures are needed, and the claims will need to be paid. I feel confident that although we are budgeting for the worst-case scenario, we will be able to be able to deliver costs below the projected increase. Also impacting our two thousand and twenty-four budget is our property tax caps, otherwise known as circuit breakers. Property tax caps are an incentive to live in Indiana and enjoy a lower cost of living. However, they do impact local government. Property tax caps for two thousand and twenty-four will result in approximately three hundred and ninety thousand dollar decrease in our revenue. Earlier this year, House Enrolled Act fourteen ninety-nine was signed by the governor and specifies that certified net assessed value submissions to the department must exclude the amount of assessed value for property that is under appeal. There's a lot to digest in H E A fourteen ninety-nine, however, in a nutshell, this will result in a significant revenue shortfall in two thousand and twenty-four that Controller Palmer will discuss more in a moment. When we are dealt a hand that results in an almost six hundred thousand dollar decrease in revenue while facing an almost seven hundred thousand dollar increase in healthcare, it goes without saying that we have worked very hard to manage our dollars. As this information came to us this year, which is all completely out of our hands, we knew we needed to buckle down and make some tough decisions about the coming year's budget because at the end of the day, it's our job to navigate these issues while still serving our citizens. We've taken many steps to craft a workable funded budget for two thousand and twenty-four. We feel strongly that any reductions we've had to make in our departments must come at our expense and not at the convenience or expectations of our taxpayers. We committed ourselves to maintaining a high level of service to the citizens of Richmond while reducing every department's overall expenditures and, for those to which it applies, reliance on the general fund. As our department heads present their individual budgets, you're going to hear a reduction from last year in travel, training, and capital expenses. You'll also hear a reduction in overtime expense in our police and fire departments. During the peak of COVID, we saw an expected increase in overtime costs in our first response departments. That trend has not only continued, it has until now increased. The time has come to turn that trend around and begin a multi-year reduction in overtime cost. Now, we're not able to feasibly right that ship in one budget year, however, we will take steps over the next three to five budget cycles to right-size the overtime line item in those departments. When speaking about capital expenses, this continues to be an intricate subject. When I first came in as mayor, our capital situation was in dire straits. We had police cars in terrible condition, mowers and earth movers in our parks department that were in disrepair, some without replacement parts available, outdated equipment in our street department, and trash trucks that were having breakdowns on routes. We've taken huge strides in those upgrades, thanks to the help of council. Over the past eight years, we've been able to purchase fifty police cars, purchase new mowing and landscaping equipment in our parks, and dispatch new trash trucks through our streets. I don't have to tell any of you that things aren't built today like they used to be. So although we have made great progress in upgrading this equipment, it is actively aging, breaking, and subject to harsh conditions. Although these expenses can be great and they strain our bottom line, there is certainly a cost associated with letting said equipment deteriorate to a point that it can be unsafe for our team to operate. So our team has gone to great lengths to assess the equipment in each department, prioritize what equipment is aging, what needs to be replaced over the next two to three years, and what can feasibly fit in the two thousand and twenty-four budget. All of this is not without its good news. We've made great strides in infrastructure investment, which includes our streets and sewers. We've set the stage to capture generational investment in our city, which we've seen this year in our industrial park and continue to see in announcements yet to come. But our greatest asset are the amazing people that work every day for this city. We have around four hundred people that keep this city moving every day over twelve departments. They have a tough, sometimes dirty and dangerous job. I want to thank each of them for their continued work and hope that our efforts here reflect the hard work they do each day to serve the people of Richmond. All of this together has brought us tonight to this presentation. We're proud of the work that has gone into this budget, and we present it to you to bring you confidence and comfort and passage of the two thousand and twenty-four budget. The fact of the matter is, we'll face our share of challenges each year, we're all here, and we'll get through it each year that we face it. We appreciate your partnership, and we look forward to continuing this meaningful work into two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the mayor, members of council, department heads, and city staff for your time and contributions to the development of the two thousand and twenty-four budget for the city of Richmond. I'm grateful to finally be at this point in the process and look forward to hearing the presentations over the next two evenings. For two thousand and twenty-four, the Indiana State Budget Agency calculated the maximum levy growth quotient for property tax levies at four percent. As the mayor mentioned, this growth has been limited in two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five by House Enrolled Act fourteen ninety-nine dash two thousand and twenty-three, which limits the growth for all cities and towns to four percent during these budget years. This factor is applied to the previous year's property tax revenue for each fund to estimate that revenue source for the coming year. Other tax revenues are also based on that factor and varying percentages. The increase in property tax revenue denotes a corresponding increase in circuit breaker or property tax cap loss that we calculate at the same rate. In the two thousand and twenty-four budget, these factors amount to a three hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollar estimated increase in property tax revenue and a three hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollar increase in circuit breaker for all city tax funds. Total estimated circuit breaker loss for two thousand and twenty-four is ten million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. The growth quotient related increases to financial institution tax, excise tax, commercial and commercial vehicle excise tax is one hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars for all city tax funds, while the total estimated revenue loss due to House Enrolled Act fourteen ninety-nine is two hundred and two thousand, twenty-three dollars. The two thousand and twenty-four budget is utilizing American Rescue Act plan dollars that have not otherwise been have not been otherwise obligated to help preserve the cash balance in the general fund by supplementing the cost of first responder overtime as it has in previous years. This budget is also utilizing our opioid settlement distribution and a contribution from the redevelopment commission to support the costs of the police and fire departments. The two thousand and twenty-four budget reflects an eight point three percent increase in health insurance rates, which equates to a six hundred and sixty-nine thousand increase for the budget overall departments. This rate is driven by overall increases in planned costs, but mostly claims. As the mayor mentioned, we are currently working with the insurance committee to potentially make some changes that could lessen the increase for both the city and our employees. The work on that matter is still ongoing. The city will not be able to support pay increases for our civilian employees in the two thousand and twenty-four budget. The only pay increases appropriated will be those to cover those negotiated in collective bargaining agreements for union employees. That is all I have for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have before we get started. If there's questions I'm unable to address specifically this evening, I will be sure to follow up with you after the meeting or at tomorrow's meeting. Thank you so much.
Any questions for Emily? For the mayor, before we start? If not, then I'll turn the floor over to Madam Chair, who will present her budget and budget to council.
I don't really have much to -- you've got a copy of it. Are you any questions? I guess I'm finished. It's very small, but even one smaller is councils. And the only increase is in that with contractual printing, travel, and training, because we'll have new counselors next year. So any questions about that?
Well, the main increase in your budget is insurance costs, looking at mine.
And mine?
Yes.
I have no control over that.
That's correct.
There's only one person in my office that has city insurance. Monica and I went off and went on Medicare so we could decrease liability for the city.
Just for the --
Well, if you recall, last year, we moved towards a per-employee for month funding model, so all positions that are available to be covered by insurance are accounted for in the --
So hopefully, there'll be savings.
There is no savings with that.
No, I mean, we don't have three employees here, so just the one.
So any questions for the chairman? Hearing none?
That's it. I told you it'd be easy. Thank you.
Yes. That takes us to law. Counsel?
Who?
I think she addressed counsel in some way, but she said there's nothing changed.
Good evening. A.J. Siglin, City Attorney. I will do my best to leave the clerk's time with my budget. The only change that I see is a decrease in the insurance line item, and that will be due to the fact that I would not need to be accounted for in twenty-four. Everything else remains the same.
Any questions for A.J.?
I did it.
Thank you.
All right. The changes that you see in the finance department salaries and wages are related to the moving of the financial compliance coordinator position to the mayor's office, which went through council earlier this year. We did have a bit of an increase to our rates and fees with Baker Tilly, which is why you'll see an increase in our contractual services. We also increased postage just a bit because we have been going over on that line item. We decreased our travel and contractual printing to try to get more in line with the budget that we had for COVID in an effort to be a team player and contribute to the reductions in the budget overall. We also reduced our training and miscellaneous expense line items.
Any questions for Emily?
Chairman.
Who is that?
On your three ninety budget, are you going to have enough money to handle this year?
Yes. Yeah, we did a transfer, and that's why I was able to lower some of the other line items.
And the other, and the additional seven thousand that you have to add for next year does for Baker Tilly?
Yes.
What, what all are they going to do for us next year?
The majority of what they do for us is the annual financial report. They help us put that together into Gateway for the state board of accounts, which is how we are audited. They also do help us a bit with the entry into Gateway for the budget and the related process out of that. And the state is always changing how they're wanting us to account for certain things. This year, the big thing was capital expenditures, so they will help us implement any of those changes that are being implemented by the state.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions for Emily? Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. Emily, can you tell me, what was the position that's moving to the mayor's office?
It's the financial compliance coordinator, and it's actually, it's moving to the mayor's office but reports to the Director of Strategic Initiatives.
And what does that person do?
Grants.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. Other questions? Hearing none, we shall move on. Board of Works.
We give health insurance.
Oh, health insurance. Oh, we don't want to hear that.
Dave's going to steal my thunder, so you know.
It's under --
It's with my name. So, good evening.
Good evening.
Two thousand and twenty-three, and it doesn't sound like it by what we're saying, but twenty-three has actually been a healthier year for the plan and for the insurances and for insurance budget. We are running close to expected on the claims. Unfortunately, this cost increase for next year is kind of modeled off of last year instead of this year, so it takes a little while for that to catch up, and that's why we're seeing the increase. We've been working with the brokers to find ways to contain the cost of the plan without sacrificing services and care for the employees. We're currently anticipating an eight point three percent increase but are working closely with the insurance committee to make some changes to bring that number down before the budget is finalized. For twenty-three, our broker was able to negotiate some better than anticipated rates for our stop loss and admin fees, which caused a reduction in both of those lines. And we're making some moves with providers to achieve over five thousand dollars in savings on vision, and it's also going to cap our increases in dental without changing in any coverage or doctors for the employees. Prescription costs continue to rise, but we are continuously adding programs from OptmRx to improve employee health and lower the drug costs. Currently, we have seven hundred and six bodies covered on the plan, two hundred and ninety-eight employees, seventy-three retirees, and three hundred and thirty-five dependents. And I was actually looking over some stats earlier, and we dropped almost a hundred bodies off the plan since I took over insurance in two thousand and nineteen. So I don't know if it's just because they're covered elsewhere or what, but we do have a lower number of bodies. But the costs don't keep going up. It's just out of anybody's hands. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Larry.
You anticipating perhaps this eight point three will go down?
Hopefully, yes.
When do you think we'll know that?
We're waiting on unions to come back with some votes to see where they're standing.
What did they have to vote?
I think they said about two weeks. They should be able to get some answers back to me. I've already got transit back. Transit's voted to go for the two-post option, but we're just waiting on A.S.M. and police and fire. They had to have time to round the numbers out to take the vote.
Does it look good?
And we go by transit, yes. I'm hoping that that's the way that they're all going to go, because if we go that route, we can cap it to one point eight percent increase.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Yeah, it's board of works.
Board of Works, there, you'll see the biggest, there's two increases in Board of Works. One is to the contractual services line item. That is due to issues with the roof of the city building. There have been some leaks in the roof that have been patched. Those patches are now leaking, so that's what that increase pertains to. The other increase is for the electric for streetlights. Earlier this year, RP and L determined that there were some streetlights that we were not being billed for, so they backbilled us for all these streetlights. So that additional cost is to cover those in the coming year.
Emily, I think you reduced that probably considerably.
I did. I did reduce it considerably, and I, just to kind of like future council members to be aware, there have been some requests for additional streetlights, quite a few. And that was about forty thousand dollars that would have increased this line item. So at this time, I would say that the decision is like an additional appropriation situation.
You need to make RP and L aware of that.
Well, the city hasn't taken action to approve those streetlights. They have not been approved, so.
Okay. Any questions for Emily? Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Emily, the ample welfare contract.
Yes.
That is going to remain the same for this year?
Correct.
And that's with Newcastle?
Yes, with Henry County.
Henry County. Is that contract signed? Have we?
I, my understanding from Chief Britt is that they have pursued moving forward with it. I don't think it's, I don't recall it going through Board of Works just yet, but Henry County has been a great partner, and my understanding is they're not asking for an increase.
I know you're the numbers person, but is, I guess I'm wondering maybe that's not a conversation for this meeting, but is that working?
Yes. They've been doing a great job.
Oh, I've had some --
It's inconvenient because we have to go all the way over there, but we're not having issues that I'm aware of, of animals being rejected or overcrowding. They're handling it very appropriately and efficiently.
I've had some citizens raise some issues with that, and I always suggest they talk to the city about that. Okay, thank you. Other Board of Works questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to Human Resources.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We will start with the Human Resources budget out of the general fund. We worked to try to identify some places where we could make some cuts, heard the request of the mayor and city controller. Therefore, you'll see under our unemployment compensation line, we have not been getting very many claims there, so we would have to shave some money off of there. In addition to our physicals and our contractual services, next year, we will only be negotiating with one union, so we won't need that full ten thousand dollars. And then we made a reduction in our legal publications. Other than that, everything, other than the insurance provision, that did go up a little bit for us.
Any questions? Mr. Chairman. Mr. Engel. The physicals, Imani?
Yes.
It's budgeted for four thousand this year and two thousand next year?
Yes, under that line item, it's for new hire physicals, and then we also do our own motor vehicle checks for new hires, and those only come in at a dollar a piece. So we kind of overcompensated last year, and we're just not using all those funds, so we decided to hold on to that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burke.
Do you have to do the physicals for the police department?
No. They do that through the academy.
Further questions? Thank you. I think we've got one more.
About two more.
Two more? Okay.
So this one will be the property and liability. Based off of the actual premiums that we paid for two thousand and twenty-three, there is a slight decrease next year. Unfortunately, we will not know what the actual numbers are until we take our insurance policies to market. That doesn't happen until October, early November.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Engel. Imani, do we try to, we get our insurance locally? Is that correct?
Yes, the Land County Insurance Services, they are our broker, and they are the ones that take all of our individual policies to market every year in order to get us the best rate.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I have one question. How many, do you have, off the top of your head, how many properties that we have to insure?
I don't, not off the top of my head. It is lumped into our property coverage.
It's over two hundred, right?
Yes. Yeah, it would be.
Some of those properties that we can get rid of?
Some of them, we only have liability on them. If they are buildings that are going to eventually be torn down, we only pay liability. We don't have full coverage. But those city buildings, we have everything.
Once they're torn down, do we, are we able to drop the liability then?
Yes, because once they change ownership from the city.
Do you have any idea how many that might be next year?
I don't. I think that field's strategic initiatives will probably have a better idea of how many they'll come on.
Thank you.
Other questions? We shall move on.
Okay, the last one is our workers' compensation. And that did increase a little bit this year. Most of that is due to the payroll audits that we do every year. We have to account for every single position that we have available and budget for that. It also includes any overtime, and there's an actuarial formula that the Indiana Public Employers Plan uses to our workers' comp coverage just through. We did also ask for a ten thousand dollar increase in our other administrative expenses just to compensate for any overages that, if we're fully sacked, we want to make sure we have the funds to cover any shortfall.
Questions? Thank you. Ready for the mayor's question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The most significant change you will see in the mayor's office, as Control of Palmer spoke about earlier, we moved the Director of Public Works and the Compliance Director under the Director of Strategic Initiatives, which is housed in the mayor's office. And so you'll see a large difference in increase for my department, but that came at a decrease of two other departments. So it's a net zero overall. We did that because the Director of Strategic Initiatives is touching a lot of the larger infrastructure projects in the city as well as our transit infrastructure, and so the Director of Public Works overseeing the airport, the transit system, is now working closer with Strategic Initiatives. And the compliance person, or the grants administrator, is now in that office as well, so we're seeking out grants for the projects that we're working on and that are upcoming. So that's why those two positions are housed in there.
Questions for the mayor? Only once.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also like to apologize. Ms. Fields was not able to make it this evening. She had something come up at the last moment, and if it's acceptable to you, we would just move her presentation to tomorrow.
That's fine. I did not find a tab or a tab, by the way. Where is that? It's not in our file. Yes, it is now?
But if we could, it would be acceptable to you, though, Mr. Chair. We could have Rodney Mays report on the airport, because he is here this evening. I think he can come back. Ms. Fields will be back tomorrow with the rest of the presentation.
And is that under Strategic Initiatives?
That is under infrastructure and development.
Yep, exactly. They do.
No, I reduced it.
I'm saying, okay.
I see, yes, it's over.
Yeah. Yes, the airport.
Airport under I D. Yeah. Rodney Mays, Airport Manager. Good evening. So just a couple, most of the budget is the exact replica of last year. We did make a couple changes. We had a seasonal that worked out very well this year to kind of help in for fill-in vacations and sick and wherever else we need them. So back in June, we increased our hangar rentals by fifteen percent. So back in June, we increased our hangar rentals by fifteen percent. So that paid for, the next thing was to take him from seasonal and put him as a permanent part-time for next year. So I think we budgeted twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars for that and last year was around seven thousand. And then we also, with things constantly breaking, anything to do with aviation is expensive. We felt like we should increase thirty-nine ninety by, I believe it went from, we budgeted thirty thousand last year. And then we took that to forty-three thousand for twenty twenty-four. So with that said, so we still have our revenues, our farm ground, hangar rental and fuel sales. And we have some miscellaneous rent fees. And so farm ground this year is up, I think we open bids next month. And it's been projected that we'll see an increase there in our farm grounds. But we won't do that until we open the bids in September fourteenth is when they're due. So currently, we budgeted one-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-four for our farm leases. Hangar rentals went to one-oh-seven, four-oh-three. Fuel income was one-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand fifty dollars. Miscellaneous, which is crew car rentals, overnight hangar stays. There was something else that goes in that for miscellaneous, but, and then we also separate that out as far as rent fees. So if an aircraft, a jet doesn't buy fuel, then we charge them. It ranges from one-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred, depending on the size of the aircraft. So, and then with that, we have interest of ten thousand dollars. So our total revenue was four-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand seventy-seven dollars. Appropriations, the one-thousand accounts was one-seventy-five, two-fifty-four. Supplies is two, in the two-thousand accounts was one-sixty-six, eight-fifty. And then other services and charges was one-ten, two-thirty-seven, twelve. So that was a total of four-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand three-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and twelve cents for appropriations. And so that was a difference of ten thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-five eighty-eight.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cat. Say those numbers again because your numbers are not what our numbers are.
Change your numbers today.
Apparently so, this was.
Changed your budget.
This is what was submitted, so I don't know.
These come from BSN.
What's that?
These numbers come from BSN.
It's this line. So that was the total of four-sixty-three, seventy-seven.
Yeah.
Total revenue. And then the appropriations is four-fifty-two.
Four-forty-nine.
Okay, so I didn't get.
I, the year thirty-nine ninety is a forty-three thousand and BSN is forty-two, that would account for some of that.
I wouldn't know where to change anything I said.
Yeah, right there.
So now are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
On your twenty-two oh-nine aviation fuel, I don't understand these figures. The budget that I have anyway is one-fourty-six, five-fifty. And that shows an increase of sixty, plus sixty-two, nine-fifty.
So what do you see in expenditures? So that would be what it would cost us to purchase. So that would be my cost to purchase the fuel and then we add the profit margin onto the expense as far as the revenue.
So which one is your, which one is your expense?
So the expense for fuel is, on my end, not a change, but it showed one-eighty-six, fifty for the combined hundred eleven jet.
It looks to me like it's just the same.
Yeah, fuel sales, right there.
Supplies, the cost is less.
Okay. Thank you, I didn't understand that.
It's a cost of the loss of itself, it's an increase of the loss.
Yeah.
And to get the price on that, we just budget for what the price is currently. And then we just kind of have to watch it for next year if it goes through another decrease. Obviously it decreases, but we just kind of set the price for what we are at current market.
Is that steadily increasing every year?
This year's been pretty stable. We were at five-seventy-one for quite a while for retail and just last week, I think it went to six-oh-four. So there wasn't a huge increase. So we're kind of watching it. It's kind of an unknown.
Are we still one of the lower cost areas to buy fuel?
We are and I was able to kind of start looking at other options because we're contracted with Phillips and Purvis Brothers. So Purvis Brothers, who we contacted to purchase our fuel, but it's under the brand of Phillips. And so some of the other, you know, airports in our region were selling fuel quite a bit cheaper than we were. And so I contacted my rep and said, hey, you know, I don't really want to make the change, but we're going to probably have to start looking otherwise so we can get, you know, the same pricing as our neighboring airports. So long story short, kind of worked with Phillips and they did give us a pretty good price break to be comparable to other airports. And so right now, to answer your question, yeah, we're, we're in the market. We're a little cheaper than some and then they're a little more expensive than, I think Winchester is always a little cheaper than we are. And it's just where they get their fuel. It's a private, so we're kind of, we're braided with Phillips and they're on non-branded fuel. So they do get a little bit cheaper rate, but there's a lot of perks with being branded as far as insurance, quality control. So there's a lot of, a lot of perks being made with the branded fuel. Plus if there's ever a shortage, these guys that are not branded will be the last to get it. But, you know, if we're branded with Phillips, then we'd still be on track to get our fuel that we need.
Are they our biggest competitor?
Biggest competitor, we've got Conner'sville, we've got Bursells, we've got, Winchester is probably, I guess, maybe the biggest competitor, I guess, in our range, but we're a little closer to Conner'sville. But for whatever reason, Conner'sville fuel price is usually about a dollar more than we are. So a lot of their customers come and get it from us. And we're, I think right now we're at, we are about a dollar cheaper than they are.
Can Winchester handle the largest, as large a aircraft as we can?
For sure, their specs. I think their runway is a little smaller than we are and I think they might have. If you hadn't asked, I probably would have told you, but I think they only have one runway. It's been a while since I looked at their specs, but we can handle, you know, probably more traffic because we do have two runways in there. They'll put a red and white wall. So, and then we have taxiways that also connect to those runways.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just as a way of clarification, Larry, were you talking about twenty-two eleven? Is that correct?
Yes.
So we're, we're negotiating the price for fleet gasoline and oil at this point?
Yeah, was that twenty-two eleven, is that for auto, unleaded?
For your equipment?
Yeah.
Yeah. I understand.
Twenty-two eleven is your fleet, but twenty-two oh-nine is your.
Right, right.
Further questions? Thank you. Anyone else in I D D tonight? That takes us to I T.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There isn't much change to the I T budget this year. I asked for a slight increase in travel and training to facilitate some cross-training in our department this year. And then I asked for a five-hundred-dollar, five-hundred dollars to be placed in my overtime line item. This past year, we, as you know, we did our switch refresh. And to maintain network uptime during business hours, we did majority of network after hours, which cost us to incur some overtime. So just to kind of be aware of that going forward, I asked for there to be something in that line item in case those same things arose. Because typically there wasn't anything in overtime. And so we, I had to come to the council and move money to pay the overtime and all that. So just a slight increase to that particular line item to take care of that. Other than that, it's totally the same.
Questions? There you go.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, streets.
I don't know how well my notes will follow the computer's flow. So what we did is the N V H budget has split. And we've got a twenty-two oh-one account, which is pretty much a services account. And a twenty-two oh-three account that is sort of an infrastructure account to do our projects and stuff like that. So we have split the salaries. And in the twenty-two oh-one account, there'll be six thousand, one hundred, five hundred and fifty, six, six, six hundred thousand, one hundred, five hundred and fifty, five hundred and thirty dollars, sorry. And then in the twenty-two oh-three account, which is restricted account, will be five hundred thousand, three hundred and four hundred and nineteen dollars.
Let me stop you for a second.
Okay.
If you look at the tab mark combined, does that not get us for both the?
That's the cash flows of both of those combined. So some of you have heard me talk about, there has been legislation passed that requires us to split at the time of receipt the N V H distribution, which is our distribution for the gas tax. So fifty percent goes into T L's like general operating account and then the other half of that goes into this restricted that can only be used for certain projects. So in the past, so the combined is just a cash flow showing how those two pan out. They're calling this a subfund, which really isn't an actual thing. So those are what they look like together. The allocations and how they're being budgeted for are split between the two detailed tabs of the twenty-two oh-one and the twenty-two oh-three.
Tabs that follow. Okay, so that takes me.
The, the individual expenses, yes. And basically, we just split them appropriately between which the funds. Because what was happening is if, if we didn't do that, this was sub, I don't want to like over go into this, but how the subfund comes into play is we're receiving all this money in here, but if we only, we could only budget for twenty-two oh-one as long as the expenses were split between that allocation we stayed within that allocation, which obviously gets pretty confusing. So that's why we split them this year. So it's, it's all really one budget. It's just split between two different funds.
It's all N V H money, but there's a subfund for.
Yeah, we're just kind, we're just kind of following the direction that you're presenting us with.
Well, it looks, so it looks like N V H unrestricted is being decreased a lot, but all of that is just being moved over to the twenty-two oh-three, essentially.
I know it's going to be hard to follow.
Well, on an earlier thumb drive, by my calculation, at the end of the day, you're going to have a hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars over, you're going to spend a hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars less than the revenue that you've got. Tap that you've got in here unless it's to me and you afford the number. But I don't know, I figured that out on this, I'll be.
Well, we made budget cuts since then and still have a, any cash balance there, they're going to make a cash balance.
And the weird part is, is between the N V H going to restricted, we moved some stuff to L R S last year. So it's a little.
Just to confuse it more.
Yeah, yeah, it's a little confusing, so. So temporary twenty-two oh-one, fifty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. Restricted account we added money to, so that's thirteen thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. Make you up.
You're going back and forth.
I know. So I can go down, I can go down to twenty-two oh-one if that don't make it easy.
Yeah, just a little slower because we can't follow.
So the temporary is eleven ninety-seven. Part-time will be eleven ninety-eight, which will be eighteen thousand and ninety-six dollars. Overtime will be the thirteen oh-two, which is forty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and thirty cents. Guys up? Longevity increased by seventy-five hundred dollars just because, you know, my employees are getting older. Fuel, I put fifty thousand dollars in twenty-two eleven. Concrete is twenty-three thirty and it's at a zero balance because it got moved to restricted. I'll show you that later. Salt, twenty-three thirty-one is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is an increase. Paint, twenty-three thirty-two is fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars, it's a ten thousand dollar increase just because we're not, there's no way we can spend five thousand dollars in paint and cover the whole city. It's just almost impossible. Plus the costs has went up.
You're talking about street marketing, right?
Well, we have a, a street marketing account down here, so.
How come it doesn't show the activity though? How come it doesn't show any activity there?
We just have a body this year. We, we're using last year's paint, so we have a body and we'll wait till the end of the year and hopefully prices are the lowest in, in body paint, so. And then we'll have it for next year. We'll use all that paint and then we'll buy it again at the end of the year.
So you think you need twenty thousand dollars of paint next year?
Uh, fifteen.
Well, you're going to use five and, five and fifteen?
Yeah, we're going to try to use what we've got this year and then we'll buy more next year.
Okay.
So that's how we've done it in the past. Usually the paint drops a little bit at the end of the season, so we kind of get a discount until a while. Doesn't always work that way, but.
Okay.
So. Stoning gravel, twenty-three sixty-two, I put five thousand dollars in the twenty-two oh-one. Liquid asphalt, zero, because I moved it to restricted. General supplies, twenty-four ten got moved. Part of it got moved to restricted, part of it got moved to L R S. I'll explain that.
Is that why hot and cold mix is calcium chloride is, is mine, it got moved?
No, we just haven't used calcium chloride forever.
You don't use hot and cold mix?
Yeah, we use hot and cold mix, but it's all moved to the restricted. I'll explain that when we get that far, so. Yeah, I know it's going to be a little misleading, so. Tires, twenty-two twelve, ten thousand dollars in it. Repair parts, twenty-two thirteen, zero in the twenty-two oh-one. Street trees, seventy-five hundred dollars. It's a fifteen hundred dollar increase because trees have went up so much, so. Thirty-nine ninety, our contractual, other contractual service account. I put a hundred thousand dollars in it just for our service contracts. Thirty-nine ninety-three, which is our contractual concrete money, zero. Repair maintenance equipment, thirty-six twenty, zero. Traffic signs and guides, forty-three twenty, fifteen thousand dollars. That's a five thousand dollar increase just because they're going up, so. Equipment, forty-four ninety, which I put a hundred and thirty thousand in that account for a dump truck, if possible. Equipment, 4490, which I'll put $130,000 in that account for a dump truck, if possible. So, around to, you want to do 2202 first, or you want me to do...
Okay, I've got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, you know better than anybody, but that's a, on your gas, you can have enough in there for your gas that you may need with the prices going up?
Actually, I've got more in restricted, so... Yeah, that's what I said, it's gonna be kind of questionable of what the numbers were. So, if we can move to the 2203...
Can I ask you another question?
Sure.
The contractual services, $100,000, is that for paving?
No, that is just for our services account, like our HVAC, our cleaning the shop, uh, service accounts. These are all gonna be service accounts. None of them will be project based, because that'll be in restricted.
Okay. And then the partnership program, 2333?
We'll fund it when we need to. We didn't, we haven't got a lot of takers in the partnership program, so we kind of talked about it last year. We took all the money out, and then we'll fund it as need be, so...
And that program is for paving sidewalks?
Yeah.
When homeowners wish to...
The homeowners want to do sidewalk, sidewalk or curb, you know, go out and measure, and then, you know?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Perfret.
On your 4490, the other equipment?
Yes.
This year, it's 150,000, right?
It's 130 in the 2201, it's 150 in the LRS, so...
And you spent 71?
Uh, right now, but we've bought leaf machines that haven't come in yet.
So, you'll spend all of that then this year?
Oh, yeah, probably.
And that's an increase then 120?
Uh, it's increased, uh, I'm not sure how much the increase was, just because we've moved money around to different accounts. So, it's increased about 75,000, I'd say.
Okay, I can't follow that, but okay.
Well, in our 2203, if you go to restricted, before you do the LRS. So, this is an infrastructure account, so this will be all our project based accounts.
Can we see a 4490 in the restricted?
It's not the way, so it's not the bottom, like any other one?
Yeah. So, that's 75,000 in the restricted account for a hot patcher, hopefully, and maybe a small paver if we can afford it, so... And then the small paver definitely be used, so... But we won't use it that often. It'll be more for alleys and tight areas that we can't get into, so... So, 2203 salaries, 500,300.
Is that restricted?
Yes. So, that's just half a watt within salaries. 1197, 13,624. Overtime, 26,244. Fuel, $50,000, that's where the make up for the rest of the fuel costs. And that's above what we spent last year. Concrete, we put the 30,000 in it for project based stuff. Stone and gravel, 2,000 in it. Hot and cold mix, the 2363 account will be 330,000 like last year. So, that's our in-house painting. Liquid asphalt, 2367, $7,000, same as last year, only moved to the restricted. General supplies, 10,000, just moved from the 2201. Repair equipment will be $20,000. That'll be moved from 2201 to the 2203. The other contractual, 3990, will be 750,000. That'll be for paving, our community crossings money, so... And any other projects that the administration wants done at the time, so... 3993 will be $50,000, our contractual concrete.
What does that entail?
Contractual concrete, that's like NIRA's working over here in the Parkview area, so they're putting in sidewalks. It's like contractual, if we need to hire a contractor, you know, they can put in sidewalks or ADA ramps if we need, even to curb.
And we hire them because we don't have enough men to do it?
Yeah. Yeah, and sometimes I'll switch money out of there to, to get our guys, our in-house guys, you know, a little more money to go with if they run out, so... But, yeah, and $50,000 is not gonna do very much, so, especially with the time tractor.
TL, do you have any idea how many sidewalks needs to be replaced as a result of the utility work that we've undergone?
Uh, well, hopefully, the utilities are fixing them as they go.
It's taking them a while. That's why I'd like to know how many layers you have.
That's the plan, so...
Yeah, it's not really...
Well, they're, they hire subcontractors, so their subcontractors have not had the help they counted on, so they're, they move faster than they think they can go. I mean, we all do the same thing, but, you know...
I've seen places on West Main where they've used paving rather than...
And they'll come back and fix it.
I hope to God they do.
It's a temporary fix, yeah, so... So, they've just run into the same problems we've all had, is they, they just can't hire enough bodies or keep enough bodies to, you know, keep up with.
Do we require them to post a performance bond, through board for us?
I think they do.
And do we have a date with respect to that, that if by this time, we're gonna call you buying?
I don't know whether they're allowed to or not.
Well, you can by law, like in most areas, and I think it's probably time that we explore that.
Utilities are a little different. I know they have a lot of leeway with, you know, the state legislature.
Well, yeah, they do.
We can't really...
Influence you?
We can recommend, but, you know, so...
Who makes the final inspection of that, you or the city engineer?
City engineer.
And that promiscuity report, that's a problem in itself, in that he's a one man shop, and he's in charge of all that, plus trying to do engineering to some degree.
Yes. So, like I said, 750,000 for community crossings, painting, sidewalk, whatever we want to see it done. Contractual concrete, 50,000. Repair equipments, 15,000 in the restricted 2203. 75,000 in the 4490 equipment account, for, like I said, a hot patcher, small paver. So, now to the LRS account, the 2202.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on, so, um... TL, with the community crossing, that schedule is already set, right, for...
For this year, yes.
For 2023?
Yes.
When will we know about 2024?
Uh, well, we'll have to work on it as soon as we, we're working on it, as soon as they get the, the, the community crossings, it'll be like January, first week in January, second week in January, something like that, so...
All right.
And then, you know, we have to tell them what we want done, the state comes in and decides whether the, the projects are worthy of money, so... So, we have to, it's a 50-50 brand, so we have to provide, whatever we're gonna spend, you know, the state will provide that much, so...
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, local room, streets.
Okay, from the LRS, 2202, uh, general supplies, remove, we put 15,000 in it. That came from the 2201, but it's, it's not really from that fund, it's just because it's a separated fund. But we moved account, different accounts to pay for different things. For 2213 repair parts, I've got 50,000 in it, so...
I'm not finding any of those numbers. Is that in the...
No, I'm serious. It's in the detail tab. Slide on or one more tab.
Street detail to the right.
2202.
22, yeah.
That's the one I want.
Yeah?
Line 27?
Fleet repair.
26.
227.
Okay.
2213, 50,000. 2410, general supplies, 15,000. 5331, street improvements, 125,000. And then 4490, other equipment, 150,000 for two more leaf machines and hopefully a paint machine.
So, my suggestion, and if you could, TL, when you present to us, present on the basis of our spreadsheets, start with the top and go down, line by line.
Okay.
Because we're walking back and forth constantly, trying to find out...
Well, I tried to hit the, the points that got increased or decreased without move.
And that's primarily what we're interested in, but we're all flipping these things around at 90 mile an hour, and having a heck of a time.
Yeah, we can't click as quick as you can talk.
I can't see as well the mind spreadsheet as I can the notes.
We have that problem too.
The truth comes out.
So, any questions?
Yeah, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, TL, you're, you're saying you're buying two new leaf machines?
We're buying two this year.
Where is that in here again?
That'll be the 4490 and the LRS, other equipment.
Oh, God, okay. Is that all, how much are leaf machines? I thought there were more than that.
Well, I thought they were cheaper than that.
I have a price for one of them.
Yeah, they're about $70,000 each, so...
I think they were a lot more than that.
You said a paver also, a small paver?
Small paver in the infrastructure, the 2203 account, if we can find a good used one, so...
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused, and you've got 150,000 in that account for other equipment, and you're gonna buy two leaf machines and a small paver?
Well, the small paver hopefully will come out of the 2203 account, so... Yeah, all this is based on estimates, and if we can find the equipment we need.
Any idea how long does it take to get two leaf machines?
The leaf machines will be ready in three months.
Oh, wow, that's amazing.
The dump truck, I'm having a lot of issues with. I can buy a chassis right off the dealer, but to find a contractor that's working on the bodies is almost a two-year waiting period, so...
What about the small paver? How long does it take to get that?
Well, that's, I'm gonna buy a used one, hopefully, on that, so...
Other questions? All right, is that it? Can you do that?
That's it.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry, no.
I've been waiting for this moment to be on the first day.
She gave us a free little lunch bag.
I have been on the last day and the last person for eight years, people. This is exciting stuff. Now, I have...
Seven years, seven years. This is the eighth year.
Okay. Thank you. Finally get my chance. Um, I have in front of you and your little lunch bag, um, if you'll follow along with me, uh, this is my budget presentation, make it simple.
Thank you.
Yes, for you. And if you have any additional questions, we can talk through those, but everything is right here, and it's through, um, top to bottom, through your spreadsheet too, so whatever you want to follow along with. Um, so I just want to kind of talk through some part positives. On the top, I've got the park reverting budgets and the non-reverting budgets, so that you're well aware. Um, talking through a couple of part positives here, I just wanted to showcase the facility rentals and how, um, we've grown in revenue by about 50% with the online options that we've had. Like to kind of share that with you, because I want you to know that we're trying our best to put in our, our best foot forward to help and not rely on tax dollars as much, and anything that we can provide in that regard, we try to. Also, I wanted to highlight the fact that the trail and service leader, we funded again uh, through donation, and I have included in your, um, uh, budget presentation here, the letter from the donor, because I thought it was very important that you saw that commitment letter from the donor, and that's in the very bottom. Uh, the trail and service leader has done an outstanding job, increasing volunteers, and also the performance and the service that he's been able to provide. Additional partnerships have been formed, and we've been able to have new trails cleared. So, new trails, um, is exciting, and we should have all those mapped by the end of the year for everyone in our community, which is very exciting, when we're working with the county and all of our GIS team here in infrastructure and development, so, yes.
If this is a leaf falls trail, are you ever gonna be able to connect that trail to the winter, be able to go over that?
It is actually connected to the Cardinal Greenway, and it'll go up and over because of the erosion, we're not able to go...
You don't have yet, don't have yet.
Yes, we are, we've been connected, so, yeah, go check it out.
Stairs?
Um, no, there's a rope and a little bit of a staircase. I think you can do it.
That sounds like fun.
It is fun, yeah.
Anybody through you?
It is fun. But the actual trail itself is the down and back at this point, and then at some point, we'll be able to try to figure out a way around.
You used to be able to do that, actually, years ago.
Yeah, 20 years ago, you're absolutely correct. I've, I've walked it. Unfortunately, with the erosion, um, but one day, we'll figure out a way. I don't doubt that a bit. Um, lifeguards, I just wanted to highlight the fact that last year, I told you that was one of our challenges, this year, it's one of our positives. We did what we said we were gonna do, we created, um, creative strategies, additional promotion. This year, we had 28 lifeguards and one pool manager, so that is huge for us. And, uh, one of those reasons why in our 1,000s, you see a little bit of an increase there in our seasonal, because we want people to come back, right? So, uh, we're gonna give them a little bit of an increase if they come back, we want returners, and that's the reason why. So, um, going through the 1,000s, I did put some of our challenges here too, just so you did see that, but I'm gonna go ahead and highlight the 1,000s going forward.
Is that park 2204 detail?
That is correct, the park fund, which is also listed in your budget presentation going forward. So, um, the park team request in the park fund at 2204, which is, uh, the reverting fund that I'm going over, that the council oversees, um, we are requesting two, um, maintenance labors in this request. That would take us to, uh, 20 full-time employees at this time, 10 part-time employees, and we ebb and flow between 66 and 93 seasonal employees, and that's all in your, um, your budget presentation here. And when we talk about ebbing and flowing, in 2017, we had about 21 full-time employees that helped us out. Uh, we went up to, uh, 22 in 2018. We went back down in 2019 to 21, and 2020, we went down again to 20. And then in 2021 to 2023, we stayed at around 19. Um, we found our sweet spot there at 20 full-time employees, that's where we'd like to stay, so that's what we're requesting. In part-time, uh, we've been upwards of 13 employees, um, at any given time, and so we're asking here for in 2024, in seasonal, we're asking for just, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, in 2024, in part-time, uh, we're gonna go ahead and decrease that, and we're gonna take that down to 10 part-time employees, which will help with... with our request for those two maintenance labors. Um, we're kind of trying to make that, um, just a little bit sweeter. And, uh, we have contractual obligation of twenty thousand dollars. So the increase there in our full-time in eleven ninety-six is forty-one thousand. But really with the contractual obligation of twenty thousand, it's only twenty thousand dollars really, look at it that way. And then the difference of sixteen thousand dollars that we're saving in part-time, really gaining two employees for only four thousand dollars, really look at it that way. There you go. Yeah, so, it's a no-brainer. And if we keep moving down to, um, seasonals, I talked a little bit about the difference in the second-year employee, um, compensation, because we need those returners. And the difference is five thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Worse than?
That's in the seasonal. And that is eleven ninety-seven. Mm-hmm. Yeah. And I talked about the decrease in part-time, sixteen thousand dollars. If we go down to the insurance provision that is outside of our control, um, we have a little bit of a decrease, which is nice in this line item. So we're thankful for that. And, uh, from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four. And then I will answer any questions in the one thousand account before I move into the two thousand accounts.
Questions?
Okay, I'll move on to the two thousand accounts. Twenty-two eleven, fleet, gas and oil. Currently, we're averaging about four thousand a month, um, we're going to increase that five thousand dollars just to make sure we can cover everything. And twenty-two forty-one, we're in chemicals here. Twenty-twenty, we totaled eleven thousand dollars before we had Eustro in twenty-twenty-four. Uh, we have spent over forty-five thousand dollars, we quoted for twenty-twenty-four, and we're going to need over fifty thousand dollars for all of our chemicals in pool and splash pads. So, welcome to my life at pool and splash pads. But, um, yeah, we're, we're doing everything we can, and if we can order them by the end of the year and save us a little bit of money and encumber those, um, and, and do what we can, we will. But we did quote that for twenty-twenty-four, and that's where we're landing. Um, just chemicals and petroleum products in general are just skyrocketing. And twenty-four ten in general supplies, um, this is safety equipment, ice melts and all of that, uh, we need additional five thousand dollars there. Greenhouse supplies, we're constantly having to do more with less, so mulch alone is seven thousand dollars, chemical increase. Um, fuel mix, we're trying to get better fuel for our, um, our chainsaws and our weed eaters and things that we operate, um, so that's costing us just a tad bit more money there. And, um, the floral division is requesting an increase in, uh, in supplies there, and that's just supplies, no capital, so that's twenty thousand, five hundred. I did make a list of all their duties and responsibilities here because I felt that was important. Of course, you know, they do take care of all the cycle track and the city buildings as well, and they do, uh, grow all of their own flowers and propagate, um, everything that they can to save as much money as possible. Jumping to the twenty-two thirteen, fleet maintenance and repair parts, um, we're asking for an additional three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And in twenty-three ten, building materials, we average about two thousand, five hundred, sometimes more per month, depending on repairs or products in this, uh, projects in this category. With cost of goods and materials increasing, we're ready for the inflation, so we're asking for an additional three thousand, six hundred. That's all for my two thousand accounts, and I'm happy to answer any questions before moving on to the three thousand accounts.
Any questions?
Okay, three thousand accounts, in thirty-nine ninety, contractual services, we're asking for five thousand dollars increase, which should satisfy the, satisfy the increase in any services we're seeing across the board, which people are increasing their ser, their services. In thirty-two ten, telephone and fax, we've added security and wifi needs, um, and that has helped out tremendously. I'm not sure if council is aware, but we do have cameras at Eustro, Stargenette, Veterans Park, Clear Creek, at the pool, Glenn Miller Maintenance Complex. We hope to, um, get more as we move forward. So, um, that is really important to our department is to protect what we have, and, uh, we want to keep moving in that regard. In thirty-four oh one, property and liability insurance, that calculation is set by H R, as well as, um, some of the other, um, workers' compensation claims that you see there. Thirty-five twenty.
Got a question?
Yes.
Since we got all these cameras, we don't get any break on our insurance now?
Um, that's a good question, and, um, we can definitely look into it.
We should. Usually you do.
So when you put in a security camera in your home, do you get a break on your insurance?
Some insurance companies give it.
Okay. All right, I'll definitely check into it. Hi, Ben.
Thank you.
Did you ask?
Yeah. Okay, so, um, thirty-five twenty, gas, uh, utilities are rising, just like everything else, we have to be ready. Um, so seventy-five percent of our budget has been expended, we need to play, plan accordingly for, uh, twenty-twenty-four. And, uh, thirty-nine, seventy-five is our grant match, this is how we pay for the market coordinator and the widow-person services coordinator, and of course, the first tee and, uh, Glenn Miller golf course area that we, uh, work so hard to maintain. And are there any questions in the three thousand accounts before I move on to the four thousand accounts, which there are none? We are not able to, to, um, to actually budget for capitals this year, but I am hopeful that that will change in the future.
Mr. Chairman. Counsel, I'd just like to tell you, I appreciate how you put this together, because it makes it a lot easier to flow and go with.
Thank you.
Since you've been doing this every year, it makes it a lot easier, so I appreciate you doing it. You know.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Just a few little touch points I wanted to hit on Richmond Farmers Market. Um, if you haven't voted yet, we'd love to see you vote right now, we have till September eighteenth. And, um, we are currently number one in the state of Indiana, third in the Midwest, and seventh nationwide. Um, I did put some market highlights in here, and then, um, it has information about season pass vendors and things like that, and on the last page you'll see, I did ask, what is the one thing you love about your job? I think it's important that council sees why the parks department team does what they do. And so, um, this is why they do what they do, and it should be why you all do what you do too, so. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to serve as your park superintendent for another year, and I can answer any other questions that you might have.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ooh, that word. Yes, we are. Right in the waters, chill.
I love bowling hills.
I love bowling hills.
Liar, liar. I think so.
So, uh, any questions from council, comments, or whatever before we adjourn from the meeting?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Emily, you mentioned earlier getting money from O, opioid account and redevelopment. What kind of money you never mentioned a figure?
Yeah, let me see. So, the redevelopment commission funding is split over two years, and it will be five hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars, split between two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. The ARPA dollars that are remaining are showing on the cash flow sheet through the general fund, it's three hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars. And, um, that would just be the remaining balance of ARPA that we need to spend before, um, it expires, we need to send it back. The opioid settlement money is four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Thank you. Say, say that again, what was that number?
Four hundred and thirty-seven, three ninety-nine.
And are we restricted in any way as to how we spend that money?
Yes, we have to spend that on, let's say, D and.
That's what I thought. Okay, so please inquire.
Yep. And that's working even, yes.
How many years do we get that?
Um, it's just a settlement, so it was a one-time distribution.
I thought we got so much.
Um, I think there's more coming, there's more lawsuits, I don't know, um.
Here's the second installment coming in and smaller installments coming after that, like another large one and then some smaller ones.
Emily, what was the, the five hundred and forty-three thousand?
Redevelopment.
And that's over two years?
It's each year.
Yeah, I don't want to misspeak, I don't know a lot about the ins and outs of details, but there was some recent legislation that allows for redevelopment commissions to fund public safety within their, uh, fights.
Well, that's just not each year, it's over two years.
No, it's each year.
It's each year, yeah.
Each year.
Still have COVID nine, right?
Currently, we, we will hear more.
Each year.
Yeah, we have, some of the other, it's still allocated to that, and this was left over.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
The council allocated for this revenue, we use it for.
Yeah, so this is what we find after that, yes.
Well, if I don't hear any further questions, we'll get you. We'll get you.